The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order the November 15th meeting of the Cary Town Council. At this time, I'll recognize Councilmember Robinson for our ceremonial opening. Ms. Robinson?
Thank you very much, Mayor. This past week, we've been celebrating the sacrifice that the troops make for us. And I'd like to just go ahead and open up this evening with a little prayer for our troops. Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for the blessings that you give us. Thank you for all of the men and women who sacrificed their lives to protect our freedom. And we ask especially that you bless those that are serving actively right now and for their families that are offering them up for the benefit of our country. As we go into deliberations tonight, I ask that you give us wisdom and please bless all of the citizens of Cary. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're currently at item three. That's the adoption of the agenda. Councilmember Robinson has been elected to the North Carolina League of Municipalities' Board of Directors. And right now, they're in the midst of a meeting in another part of the state. She drove over three hours to get here. She's going to be here for a little while, and she's going to turn around and drive three hours back to accommodate her trying to make both things at the same time serving the town. We're going to rearrange our agenda slightly so she can vote on things that are very important to her and very important to the town. And so therefore, the items on the agenda are going to be a little bit different than before. And I'll walk us all through it as we go. And if I mess up, the town clerk will let me know. So, let's handle item F, land development discussion items, before item E, which is the public hearings. So we're going to reorder our public hearings as follows. Number one will be Glencroft, 12 REZ 16. Number two will be West Park, 12 REZ 19. Number three will be Wilson Road, REZ 25. Number four will be Annexation, 12 A 17. Number five will be Public Art Master Plan. Number six will be Economic Development. Number seven will be the Jones Family Farm, 12 A 18, and 12 REZ 24. Number eight will be Chatham Point, 12 CPAO 5, and 12 REZ 26. And as I said, I'll lead everyone through the agenda to assure we don't create any confusion. And I would accept a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
Slow moved.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're now at the consent agenda portion of our meeting. That's item B for the benefit of those watching on TV or in our audience. We'll take a moment to read the consent agenda items. I'll point out that one vote approves all of these items on the regular land development consent agenda we have. Approval of the minutes, approval of a tax report, calling for a public hearing on annexation requests, 2012 developer agreement and reimbursement update, the comprehensive plan amendment, 12 CPAO 4 for the Kingswood neighborhood, Collins Road rezoning, 12 REZ 13, and a comprehensive plan consensities statement. And Councilmember Robinson, would you briefly summarize our Operations Committee consent agenda items?
Yes, I'd be happy to. If I can find it on the agenda. There it is. Okay, sorry. Okay. The first item is the inter-local funding agreement update for the Cary sports venue. The second item is the Walnut Street water line and sidewalk project. And this is a construction bid-award recommendation appropriating $450,000. Also, the next item is the resolution approving the 2007 local water supply plan. And the last item is the park's recreation and cultural resources facility operations policy review and update. And that policy review update pertains to community centers, Page Walker Arts and History Center, the Hemlock Bluffs Nature Preserve, Cary Senior Center, the tennis park, the soccer park, and the Cary Arts Center.
Okay, thank you. And before we vote on our consent agenda items, I'll point out that both Mayor Protim Adcock and myself are employees of SAS Institute. Annexation 12 A 19 is a SAS requested annexation. My voting on this annexation does not result in any direct substantial or readily identifiable financial impact on me. Our town attorney has advised me, or the Mayor Protim and I, that merely being an employee of an applicant does not trigger a voting prohibition. Ms. Adcock, is your situation the same as mine?
It is.
Okay. Therefore, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Slow move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're now at item C1 on our agenda, and it's our Hometown Spirit Award. I'm pleased to invite our 2011 Hometown Spirit Award recipient, Keith Bliss, to join the podium. Mr. Bliss, would you do the honors of inviting our 2012 award recipients to the podium?
Absolutely. Betsy and Joy, and I won't even use their full names. Well, yes, I will. Betsy Dasaw and Joy Pike, will please come up to the podium with us.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Cary Mayor.
It's my privilege to tell you a little bit about these two young ladies. They're two incredible women, both of whom actively serve in our community in many, many ways. Through their service, they've shown us how small-town America values are a vital, important part of the quality of life we have here in Cary. Betsy Dasaw is a founding member of the Cary Portrait Artists. She's a board member of the Fine Arts League of Cary. She's a founder of the Cary Creative Center since March of this year. And she reminded me that was the day I had my surgery on my eyes, and so I missed that opening. This organization has diverted 23 tons of material from our local landfills. She's a member of the Triangle Reuse Alliance Steering Committee. In this capacity, she has helped organize the Town Reuse Rodeo. And we have an event coming up, right?
That's right. America Recycles Day.
America Recycles Day coming up. She volunteers at town festivals and the Spruce Program, which is one of my favorite things. And she's a school volunteer. Joy Pike, our other award winner, is the Chair of the Heart of Cary Association and currently in the midst of leading their annual toy drive. She's a USA Baseball Host Parent. And if you haven't heard her stories, y'all ought to hear some of those. Those are really cool. She's an organizer of the Old Time Winter Festival about two weeks away. It's going to be soon. She's the treasurer of the organization proposing a downtown Cary Children's Museum. She's a member of Cary Sister Cities Association. She's a volunteer of town festivals and the Spruce Program. Yay. And she's an election precinct judge. And that one I didn't know about.
Yeah.
And Joy's recently suffered a loss in her family. And I do want to give you the condolences, not only from me, but I'm sure from many of us here tonight. And we know this is a hard time for you, and we appreciate you being here. We're proud of Mr. Bliss and all that he's done representing the town as our third Hometown Spirit Award recipient. And we would like you to help pass this award on to our recipients, if you would. And I'm hoping you have some brief comments to make before you pass those awards along.
Sure.
All right.
Mayor, members of council, and everybody here, I just want to share a quick story, and this will probably sum it all up. Last year, a year ago today, my family came for the reception prior to the award ceremony here in council chambers. And after hearing about all the accolades of the other recipients, my wife looked at me and said, "They're tired. I'm just going to take them home." So she did. And it was, and so I came in, ready to just call her up on the way home like I usually do, telling her I can stop at Harris Teeter on the way home, that we need anything. And when I called her to tell her that I wasn't going to Harris Teeter, but I was coming home with this award, when I got home to the driveway, I was attacked by three freshly bathed, amazing children, completely wired from all the goodies and many, many, many Ashworth hot dogs. And it was just amazing because the recognition of this award in such a large town, to have, you know, a small-town feel to the welcome that that brought to my family and the connection that they all got to witness of my dedication to making this town a better place to live, not just for me or for my family. And it has, and none of, it really has anything to do with business interests or anything else, other than I truly, truly care about this town and what it stands for, the future for my kids. These two recipients here are both very close friends of mine. We've had the opportunity to work together on plenty of different projects together and gotten to know both of them. I can tell you from experience, I'm so glad that they don't have such a shadow like I did following Kay Strupolino. Following me is very easy, and it'll be very hard for someone to follow both of you next year. Congratulations.
Thanks.
As an award recipient, they receive a beautiful plaque, and they'll be forever known as winners of the fourth annual Hometown Spirit Award. The first one, Betsy Dasaw.
Thank you. I want to first thank Ruth Merkel and Greg Wong and Fay Bibby for the nomination. These are my neighbors, and that means all the world to me. Thank you, Mayor Weinbrick, and the Town Council, especially Jack Smith, who helped us open our center, and Gil Adcock, who gave us donations right at the very beginning. And I also want to thank Ed Goff and Emily Barrett, who are in the town, employees here, that really gave us our support. I also want to thank my family, Gary, Travis, Cory, and Drew. Hello. Okay. And without their support, I certainly couldn't do any of this. I want to thank my sons because that's why I joined the PTA. I also want to thank the Fine Arts League of Cary. We have a couple members here, Paulette Wright and Don Hamilton, who have served the town so long with a wonderful organization. There's over 200 members of the Fine Arts League of Cary, and we're so proud to be here, especially with the new arts center. And I just want to thank everybody in the town, all the volunteers, because you make Cary the best. Thank you, and my slogan is, "Make art, not waste." Thank you.
Our co-winner this year, Joy Pike.
First off, I'd like to say thank you very much to the Cary Town Council for the honor of winning the 2012 Town of Cary Hometown Spirit Award. Special thanks to Doc Thorne and Don Hamilton for nominating me this year. And I heard that through the grapevine that he got some input from some other people, too, that I believe are here tonight. So, but I am so fortunate to live in this town, in which I love so much, and I enjoy being active in the community and its activities. Even though this award is presented to me, I would like to also thank all of my friends that work with me in the Heart of Cary Association, the Festivals Committee, and the others that do so much for the town, as well as myself. Again, I thank you for this award, and I'm honored to be able to share it with my friend, Betsy Dasaw.
I can tell you that I'm very proud of these young women.
Glad you called us young.
In my mind, you're young. For all they've done for this town. This town is great for many, many things, but one of the things that makes it great are the volunteers. And these two young ladies show you what volunteering is all about. And I'm very proud of everything you've done, and I'm sure you will represent us well in this year as our Hometown Spirit Award winners. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Keith, you do amazing things, and you represented us well this past year. Thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you.
And keep these troopers volunteering with you. All right. Thank you. Before we move on, we have some special guests in our audience this evening. And that's a We Blow Troop 200 group. And at this time, if you could stand so we could recognize you in our audience and thank you for being here and learning about your town government. We're now at item C2, and that's the Town Manager's Operational Update. And this time, I'll recognize our Town Manager, Mr. Shiver, who will present the Manager's Operational Update. Mr. Shiver?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to call on Scott Fogelman, our Budget Director, to make our presentation that I think we see about, probably about nine months out of the year. And as a brief introduction, as we begin the first presentation in this fiscal year, just to let our audience and those viewing at home understand that one of the reasons we do not begin the report early in the fiscal year is that we really don't have a lot of experience or information that we can give out at that point. So this, tonight, Mr. Fogelman will focus on the year-end for last year, since those figures have been worked with by our auditing group that has already been in. That report has not been published yet, but we know a great deal of information at this point in the year. So first, I'd like for Mr. Fogelman to give us that report. And then I have one other item I'd like to add after he completes his presentation.
Okay, very good.
Good evening, Council. As we typically do, we'll be focusing on the general fund operations for fiscal year 2012 and expressing it in terms of operating margin. And it's simply defined as revenues less expenses leaves what's left, our operating margin. We'll be using a graphical format. Our margin impact will be expressed in terms of millions of dollars on the scale. The black bars will represent margin growth or comparisons that are better than our budget expectations. And then the red bars, those where the margin declined compared to budget expectations. We began the fiscal year with an adopted budget, expecting to end up the year with about an $80,000 positive operating margin. The largest single variance throughout the entire fiscal year, adding it all together, is our personnel expenditure category. We actually spent about $2.1 million less than we budgeted for the full fiscal year, and that's out of a budget of about $83.5 million. So it's only 2.6% less than we budgeted, and that's simply due to vacancies as they occur throughout the year, because we do budget 100% for all of our staff members. This miscellaneous category of 1.9 million will make this presentation go a little bit quicker, because that's everything else. That's a lot of operating and maintenance expenditures that we simply didn't need all the funding to spend this year. Some of that will carry over to the following year. But the rest of the items point to some specific things throughout the year. And one of the more promising notes was our sales tax revenue for the year, about 1.7 million, or 8% better than our $21 million budget in this category. So this is one of those good stories, bad stories. It's better than our budget performance, but still much less than the peak that it was in 2008. We're not yet back to that level. If things perform well next year, we might begin to approach where we were five years ago. So good budgetary performance, but still, overall, the recession's impact is still, compared to five years ago, we're not back yet where we were. Advalorm tax revenue did perform better than budget, about $850,000 on our $21.1 billion tax base. Most of that is due to our stellar collection rate this year. 99.4% of folks paid their tax bills during the fiscal year, which is our highest in 10 years. Our average over the last nine years has been just over 99%. So that's one of the great things when you're budgeting, that you can expect to actually receive it. So very strong performance there. We did have some prior-year tax revenue late last year. We did have a tax appeal. Therefore, we could not record that tax revenue last year. That has since been resolved, and we were able to book that revenue this year. So it created some unanticipated revenue this fiscal year, 750,000 better than budget. We did receive some federal grants, higher than we expected at the beginning of the year. We only budgeted about $28,000 for federal grants. One of the larger ones was a community-oriented policing grant, as well as some federal drug forfeiture funds that we'll be leveraging in the future. We did receive traffic signal reimbursements, about $390,000, better than anticipated, more or less due to additional workload working on the traffic signal system, therefore getting reimbursed a little bit more from NCDOT. Our variable-rate debt savings continued throughout the end of the fiscal year, better than budget, about $190,000. We experienced an average percentage rate for the year of .118 percentage points, and we budgeted based on .575. So still experiencing very low variable-rate debt in the market today. Building permit revenue, this is the one that, early last year, based on trends, we expected actually to be about $500,000 below budget for the year. And we finished strong in May and June. And the average revenue for those two months was about two and a half times the average for the previous 10 months. So we finished strong with about, versus the average of $155,000 for the first 10 months, we finished strong with $248,000 and $485,000 respectively for the year, to come in just better than budget for the year. Occupancy tax revenue of $130,000, better than budget, as well as previous license fees of about $120,000, or 8% better. We had some savings in planning contracted services with a capital area metropolitan planning organization savings in that allocation. And our recycling revenue for the year performed a little bit better. We have a base contract where we will not receive less than $18 per ton. We started out the year in the $50 range. It did bounce down to 18, pop back up to 25. And our year-end average was about $30 per ton. Our utility franchise fees, wireless revenue, and video taxes did perform a little bit lower than our budget expectations for the year, about $450,000. And actually, that's only about 5.8% of that revenue source. And our other area of margin decline, we did see, need some additional funding throughout the year to support our legal contracted services efforts, which led us to a year-end operating margin of $8.43 million. But as you know, business does not stop at the very end of the fiscal year. From June 30 to July 1, we have lots of things still in progress, purchase orders, items to still be delivered. So at the end of the fiscal year, for those items already in business, we continue, have a continuation funding that rolls those funds over to the following fiscal year. So those transactions can be completed. So once that budget authority is reallocated, that leaves us with a net year-end operating margin of about $2.9 million. And that's about $500,000 higher than our last forecast at the end of June. And that $2.91 million net year-end margin represents about 2.5% of our $118 million budget for the general fund. And with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Shiver to complete the update.
Thank you, Mr. Fogelman. I think one comment that I would add to this is this does represent what I consider to be excellent financial management. And sometimes it's difficult to convey or to explain exactly the kind of economic environment that we are in. I think sometimes individuals often mistake a good financial picture such as this, meaning that we are loaded, that we've got lots of money. That is not really the case. What it does say is that for the monies that we have, given our revenue, our income stream, the council is doing an excellent job at managing what we have. It does not mean that we're flush with cash. And I think Mr. Fogelman's comment that we had, only this year are we coming close to regaining the amount of sales tax revenue that we had in 2008. Now, you have to remember that, I mean, that's a considerable amount of time and a long way to get back to where we were nearly four years ago. So that kind of illustrates that it's been a slow recovery for us. But within that, those revenues that we do have, council can be satisfied that a good job is being done in managing those funds. We continue to improve. It is very slow. We're seeing, we've reported before, that we have seen an uptick in building permit fees, development activity, considerable activity we're seeing now in the planning department for new submittals for development. But there's often a lag time between what is submitted and what we approve and look at before that actually translates into revenue for the town. So steady improvement, but very slow improvement. In fact, I think you can tell by the length of your meetings recently that that's one sign that there is much more activity in the community. So I wanted to make that one comment, and I thank you, Scott, for bringing us that information. The last thing I would like to mention, Mayor, is just to follow up on the results of the bond referendum. And with the passage of the Cary Community Bonds, I advise council that to find the information about specific projects, to look at their schedules, that information would remain on our website until the end of November. At that point, we would then migrate individual projects to individual departments where they will reside as we move forward to implement them. We will continue to do that. However, in discussions with staff, we believe we will also put the existing community investment bonds webpage... investment bonds webpage that's right now is actually hosted on a separate site, but it will move to our site, pretty much intact, in order to give citizens a location where they can go and take a look at the results of this, because it will be quite some time before we begin, before we would complete a lot of the projects, and it'll be some time before some of these begin. So I think there's an element of out of sight, out of mind, and we don't remember them. Council did associate the passage of the bonds with a tax increase that would be effective July 1. And between now and then, there's more than a good chance that we will add 5,000 to 7,000 population of people who did not participate in this election. So those folks, others in the community, will need a site where they can go to see what the projects are, what the schedule is, what the results of the referendum, the results were, so that they can have that knowledge at different points throughout the year. So that is the one change from my earlier advice to you, and just wanted to make sure that council, as well as our citizens, understood that they can find a place to find that information pretty quickly. And that completes my report here.
Thank you, Mrs. Schiefer. We now move to our next item, which is item D, Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at this forum on the printed agenda. And if you'd like to speak at this forum, please take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out speakers have up to three minutes for their comments, and speakers may speak on any topic that is not listed as a public hearing under item E on the agenda. I'll enforce the three-minute time limit to be fair to all of our speakers. Here's our timer located on the podium, and when the green light turns yellow, that means the speaker has 30 seconds remaining. When the time expires, the yellow light will turn into a flashing red light, and at that time, I'll interrupt the speaker and ask them to immediately conclude their comments. And I will thank all of our speakers in advance for adhering to the three-minute time limit. I'll now open up public speaks out portion of this meeting for anyone who would like to speak on an issue that is not a public hearing tonight, and at this time, would invite the first speaker to the podium. Ms. Dickerson, welcome back.
I wrote a letter of thanks, and I would like to read it. And I don't know, your copies haven't been distributed yet, but each of you have a copy. And I've gotten you bifocals, so excuse me. Says, Dear Mr. Mayor and Council, on behalf of the Hillsdale Forest community, I would like to extend our appreciation for exemplary services rendered by the Cary Police Department, especially the following individuals: Randall Ryan, Captain Cary Police District III; John Reeves, Community Services Officer; Sergeant Bruce Dale, Officer Randall Ward; and Elise Perez in the Crime Analysis Division. At a community meeting on September 30, we had the privilege of meeting these officers. We were afforded the opportunity to ask questions, receive immediate responses, and to discuss many aspects of community safety. We were informed of a free service available through the police department to assist in identifying actions we, as homeowners, can do to ensure we continue to have a safe and secure environment. Also, they introduced us to the modern community watch program. Now, because of such positive leadership by Captain Ryan and the most informative presentations by all officers, a new Hillsdale Forest Fair Lane Plus Watch Group has been organized. This group not only has Fair Lane Road residents, but residents from all of, all parts of our community. In addition, we would like to extend our gratitude to Elise Perez in Crime Analysis, who was so kind in assisting us with reports concerning our community, and her help was definitely invaluable. This letter is to express, express our belief these employees exemplify the standards set forth in Cary's mission statement by demonstrating professional conduct and sincere concern for Hillsdale Forest and all residents of Cary. We respectfully request this letter be considered a letter of accommodation and placed in each individual's personnel file. Sincerely, Martha R. Dickerson, proud resident of Hillsdale Forest. And a copy is going to Chief Pat Bazemore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for Public Speaks Out.
No, I'm not confused. I know I was supposed to come later on the agenda, but, and I hadn't planned to speak tonight, but I thought maybe I better tell you about something you did right. Recently, I went on a fairly extended trip, and while I was away, one of my toilet valves blew up, basically started spewing water. And I had no idea that it was doing this. When I got back, I got a call from the Cary Water Department, because we have something called AquaStar that was monitoring my usage and determining there was something out of whack. Because they did that, I was able to find the problem toilet, actually, we had two of them, fix it before my bill approached the national debt. It was still a hefty bill, but it would have been much, much hotter, much higher if you had not invested in AquaStar. So I want to congratulate you on making a very good decision. Hopefully, other citizens will have the same experience.
Thank you. Next speaker for Public Speaks Out. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? Seeing no one, I'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to our land development discussion items. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, we're kind of rearranging everything, so we're moving to item F on the printed agenda, which is the land development discussion items. We're going to have our public hearings at the conclusion of this agenda item. Our first land discussion item is item F1, Bailey Park rezoning, which is 12REZO7. We're going to hear a report from our staff, followed by our planning and zoning board representative, and council may take action on this rezoning and the comprehensive plan consistency statement this evening. Ms. Granton of our staff will present this report.
Thank you. Good evening. This is a case that was presented to you initially for public hearing back in June of this year, and then it was on the back burner for a while, while a comprehensive plan associated with the case was approved. So it came back to the planning and zoning board in October, and is before you tonight for a final determination. It's a request to rezone approximately 10.44 acres, located at Evans Road and Bailey Park Lane. Here's an aerial view of the subject property. Portions of the property are developed with some older, single-family homes, and there's some vacant property as well. Cary's land use plan designation is medium-density residential. The existing zoning is a combination of residential 20 and residential 40, and the applicant has proposed a zoning of residential 8 conditional use. The applicant has proposed that the use be limited to single-family detached residential and any uses that would be allowed under park, open space, with the exception that public athletic fields would be prohibited. The planning and zoning board recommended the case for approval with a vote of 7 to 1, and at this time, I'll ask our planning and zoning board chair to describe the discussion. This concludes staff's presentation.
As was indicated, we did vote on this, this case with one dissenting vote, and that one dissenting vote was concerned that the density involved was at the high end of medium-density residential, and that perhaps it was a little bit too high. However, I don't think it was that strong an objection. The majority of our board did recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanstrom. Questions or comments from council or a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, just, just a comment. You can make the motion then. One thing I like about this, we've had so many rezonings lately where we hear that the rezoning, the proposed use is not compatible with the adjacent development. In this one, when we look at the staff report, it has north, south, east, and west, and north is single-family development, south is single-family, east is single-family, west is single-family, the proposed use is single-family. It's the first one since I've been here that was exactly that way.
You were doing a good one, Ed.
So I just think that's a, that's a positive thing to say.
Mr. Frank?
Make a motion to approve 12-REZO7.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Make a follow-up motion to approve the comprehensive plan consistency for 12-REZO7.
A second.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to item F2, the Weston Plan Development, which is 12REZ15. We're going to hear a report from our staff, followed by the planning and zoning board representative, and council may take action on this rezoning and the comprehensive plan consistency statement this evening. And once again, Ms. Granton will present the report.
Thank you. This is a request to amend a portion of the existing Weston PDD on a parcel of land, which is approximately 11.65 acres, located at 1,001 Sheldon Drive. This is a vicinity map showing the subject property located north of northwest Cary Parkway, and a close-up view showing that the property is developed with an existing office building. And this shows you the location of the subject parcel within the Weston PDD. Cary's land use plan designates the subject property as office and industrial. The proposed amendment would be to add wellness center as a permitted use on this tract, which is identified as tract 7, Planned Employment Center in the Weston PDD. Since you saw this initially, the initial request was for a 1,300 square, or 13,000 square foot wellness center. The applicant has revisited the, the area and is now proposing a 10,000 square foot area, and that is what was presented to the planning and zoning board. They also added a zoning condition that indicated that the parking provided would be in accordance with the land development ordinance requirements. So staff reviewed what their current requirements were, let them know that they would need to add five additional parking spaces, and they did agree that they would do that. And the property owner advised the planning and zoning board that they would be moving forward with that, once they know what the outcome is of the zoning. There were two protest petitions. One of those petitions that had been submitted by Highwoods Properties, the property management company, that was withdrawn yesterday. The adjacent property owner also submitted a protest petition, and therefore, it is still valid and would require a supermajority vote to be approved. Concerns expressed on the protest petitions were that the current use was representing a zoning violation, because they had occupied the space without having appropriate permits in the zoning, that the request applied only to a single parcel of land. At that time, the Property Owners Association did not have support for the request. There was a question about the compatibility of the use with the definition in the land development ordinance for wellness center, concern about sufficiency of parking, impacts on a shared driveway that the adjacent property owner shares with this building, traffic impacts, and that there was outdoor activity taking place with some outdoor classes. This is an aerial view showing the adjacent property who submitted the protest petition and the shared driveway between the two uses. The planning and zoning board recommended this for approval with a vote of 8 to 0. And once again, I'll ask Mr. Swanstrom to describe the discussion.
As Ms. Bierman indicated, we did vote unanimously to recommend approval of this, and some of the reasons for that cited by our members. First of all, we think the use is of value to Cary. I have to tell you that we heard from a large number of Cary citizens in support of this proposal, and as you know, it's really nice when you have a public hearing and you get to actually hear from citizens, rather than people that are developers or, or trying to rezone a property. It's great when you get to hear from citizens, well, we got a chance to hear from a lot of them. A number of our members, I think almost the entire board at one point or another went out and inspected the parking, and sat there and looked at the traffic. It was a little crazy, because we were comparing experiences, looking for issues, and none of us could find any. We didn't find issues with parking, we didn't find issues with traffic. That's just, you know, our observations going at various rush hours, but the, our insight was that there didn't seem to be a real problem. We observed that an allowed use for this property, schools, would actually generate more traffic than this use does. So in fact, if the concern was traffic, you could probably have a greater problem had this use been replaced by a school. So we did vote unanimously to recommend your approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanstrom. Valuable information. Ms. Granton, have you completed your report?
Yes, unless you have any questions.
Okay. I'll remind council that there is a valid protest petition, which requires six council members to vote affirmatively to approve this rezoning. I'll open it up to questions, comments, rezoning. Ms. Adcock, it's been so long since I've seen you, I almost forgot you.
Hello, Mayor, how are you? As one might expect, I support this, this use and this rezoning, given the business that I'm in, health and wellness, and I cannot think of a better location to have a wellness center than near employment centers and near residential. So it has my full support. And I'd be happy to make a motion until, unless somebody wants to say something.
Well, I just wanted to add as well, I joined the PNC members and actually ran into a couple of them when I was sitting outside these locations, just to actually feel, you know, what the traffic was like, to watch the shared driveway. I actually saw two of the PNC members when I was there, we were both looking across at the cars, like, what are you doing here? So I appreciate, by the way, all the effort that PNC went to. It was nice to see them out there, standing on the site, walking around and feeling it. I know that when I was on PNC, I did the same thing. It was nice to see them putting all that extra effort. They do such great work. And I also talked to a couple of the customers as they were coming out, they saw me sitting there as well. So I really appreciated the fact that the notes that we received and the emails we received were really from the heart. They weren't a, you know, a template letter that somebody sent. I've never gotten a letter from a constituent saying that this place saved my life, right? And I have to really give credence to not only the business owners, but the constituents and citizens who actually sent us a letter to say how much this meant to them. So I really commend them for that.
When it comes to the numbers, as far as traffic generation is concerned, we have actual and theoretical numbers for this one. We have the numbers from the infamous Trip Generation Manual. We also have actual traffic studies that were done based on the last public hearing, I believe, here. The town went out there for a couple days. And then we have the unofficial numbers with the planning and zoning board going, going out there. And I think that was wonderful, that, as Laurie says, that really impresses me, that you went out there and actually counted cars. And I think all of those numbers support the action that I, sounds like we're about to take.
Okay.
I move approval of rezoning 12REZ15.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Further discussion?
Just wanted to note that it was actually a school before it was a wellness center. So the traffic they're experiencing now is less than it was before.
I'm kind of jealous that when you guys go there, people say hi to you. When I go there, they call the police.
Well, there you go, Jack.
There you go.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I now move approval.
Oh, yes, I keep forgetting.
That's okay. Now move approval of comprehensive plan consistency for 12REZ15.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That was funny, Jack.
We now move to public hearings.
We'll stay a little bit longer.
Okay. This is item E on our agenda. The same rules we had for Public Speaks Out apply to public hearings, which is item D. With one exception, instead of three minutes to speak, you have five minutes to speak. At the beginning, we agreed to reorder our public hearings, so our first public hearing this evening... So our first public hearing this evening will be Agenda Item E4, and it pertains to Glencroft Townhomes and consists of rezoning 12REZ-16 and the associated statement of reasonableness and consistency. Staff will introduce the item. The applicant will share details about the request. Planning and Zoning Board has already conducted a public hearing on this rezoning request, and a board representative, Mr. Swanstrom, will share those results with us. And after these reports have been given, we'll open the public hearing. And following the public hearing, the council may take action. And Ms. Granton, once again, will introduce the item.
Thank you. This is a request for the Glencroft Townhomes rezoning case 12REZ-16. The subject property is located on approximately 25.89 acres, adjacent to Cary Glen Boulevard. The property is shown here, highlighted in yellow, just north of Mills Park and south of Carpenter Fire Station Road. Here's an aerial view of the subject property that shows it is fairly heavily wooded and has not been developed with any structures. Cary's land use plan designation for the subject property is medium-density residential transitioning to high-density residential. The subject property is located in the Northwest Area Plan and within the Cary Park Mixed-Use Overlay District. The existing zoning is residential 40, again, the property is within the Mixed-Use Overlay District for Cary Park. And the proposed zoning going through the MXD process would be for mixed zoning, and with that comes the requirement for a preliminary development plan. The proposed Glencroft Preliminary Development Plan has been reviewed by the Development Review Committee twice. Comments have been generated and sent back to the applicant. And here's a color illustration that shows you and adjacent property owners what they could expect if this plan were approved. The plan proposes 150 townhome units. It proposes specific open space. This plan gives you the exact location of where perimeter buffers would be located, and then shows a general layout of the roads, sidewalks, general location of stormwater management devices. That level of detail for the roads and stormwater management and engineering would need to be studied more closely at the time of site plan. But in terms of building placement, number of units, setbacks, things of that nature, the plan is either consistent with the ordinance or exceeds LDO requirements for setbacks, perimeter buffers, and open space. So again, a summary, 150 residential dwelling units with a density of 5.79 dwelling units per acre required open space and community gathering areas. Staff evaluated the request in terms of the mix of uses in the Cary Park Community Activity Center and found that it was consistent and did help to achieve the desired balance with a medium-density residential or townhome development. There was only 66 existing within that overlay district, and the proposed development would be within the desired mixed balance. Notification was sent to property owners within 400 feet of the subject property. Staff did not receive any protest petitions. However, we did receive a phone call from the Cary Park Property Owners Association with concerns regarding traffic, school capacity, and density. The site shows that it is impacted, according to Cary's GIS maps, by a stream buffer, and field determination of that would be required at the time of site plan review. Property is located, as I mentioned, north of Mills Park, and the dash green lines show the location of proposed greenway trails along the subject property or in the vicinity of the property. And private trail connections would be a requirement to access this public greenway trail system. Cary Glen Boulevard is identified on Cary's Comprehensive Transportation Plan as a collector road. There's very limited frontage. It's just enough room for a driveway along that road. So the impacts in terms of a streetscape are not going to be felt on this property, but it just lets you know the road network in the vicinity. And the closest transit route is a future route along Green Level Church Road. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and give you an overview of the plan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm JW Sharon with IBS in Cary, North Carolina. Thank you for this opportunity to address this plan on this site. Back in June of this year, we had a neighborhood meeting in the Cary Park Clubhouse. It was attended by some citizens in the area. Overall, all positive comments. We had residents say, "Townhomes are great, just no more apartments, please." And following that, we met with staff and moved forward with our request. And overall, the concept plan we had, staff was in agreement with the layout, the adjacent connections. One of the good things with this site is it is next to a park and a greenway system. To the east, you have a substation which buffers it in from the effects of I-540. And one of the main things I'd like to point out that Deborah spoke about was how it fits in the Cary Park Activity Center. You already have high-density residential there with two apartment communities. You have a nice retail center and you have some office. And when looking at the graphs that she had with the statement of what's there now and what needs to be, this is a nice site to put in townhomes. And it kind of fits the puzzle for what's needed in that area. We felt that, you know, beyond that, we would reach out to the adjacent shopping center. So we physically went to every one of the tenants in there and advised them of what we were proposing to do. And we had a 100% response on this proposal as presented to you tonight. Also, through the process, we did not receive any protest petitions, and again, no negative comments that we were aware of. We had unanimous support from the planning board. And so with that, we really, really think this is a perfect fit for this site. Thank you so much.
And at this time, Mr. Swanstrom can describe the discussions at the Planning and Zoning
Again, we voted on this particular case unanimously to recommend approval. The only question that was really raised is the need for a traffic signal at Cary Glen Boulevard. And we were told that the cost of that signal would be borne by the developer. I'll tell you that we had an awful lot of comments that MDR was the right use here. It seemed very appropriate. We commented on the quality of design. Usually you don't see quite this level of detail, but we thought that this design would be a nice place to live, and several of us even commented that, you know, maybe someday for us.
Thank you, Mrs. Swanstrom. Okay. We'll now open the public hearing for those who would like to speak on this rezoning. That's rezoning 12REZ-16 Glencroft Townhomes. First speaker may come forward. Anyone to speak on this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments or a motion.
Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I think this is a good fit for Cary Park. I don't know if citizens are aware how hard it is to get a unanimous decision out of the Planning and Zoning Board, so I think that's a real testament to the quality of this project that is being brought forward. So I'm glad to see that so much of the open space has been taken to be preserved. And one thing that we are not always seeing is that there's a community space provided for the neighborhoods. I'm glad this contains a community space. So with that, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You want to follow up with the consistency?
Yes, thank you. I also make a motion that we approve the comprehensive plan consistency for 12REZ-16.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Granton. We'll now move to Agenda Item E5, which pertains to the West Park Plan Development, and consists of rezoning 12REZ-19 and the associated statement of reasonableness and consistency. Staff's going to introduce the item. The applicant will share details. Planning and Zoning Board's already conducted a public hearing, and they're going to share their details. And after the reports have been given, we're going to open up the public hearing, and council may take action on this request. So Ms. Bierman, please introduce this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the public hearing on a proposed amendment to the existing West Park Plan Development Property is located at the southeast corner of NC-55 and High House Road, and it contains the existing West Park Place Shopping Center. The site is Zone Plan Development District Major. It is tract I of the West Park PDD. This request would not change the zoning designation or the boundary of the district. It would amend the minimum and maximum square footage allowed for shopping center and office uses that are allowed within tract I. The existing West Park PDD limits development within tract I to 120,000 square feet of floor area, with a maximum of 108,000 square feet in shopping center use and a minimum of 12,000 square feet in office use. This amendment would reduce the minimum floor area for the office use to 3,900 square feet and establish a new maximum for the office use of 40,000 square feet. And this change by default would increase the maximum shopping center floor area from 108,000 to 116,100 square feet. And the intent of these changes are to ensure that there's not too much office use so that it maintains a good balance with the focus on commercial. This is an aerial view of the site that shows the existing development on the property. The land use plan designation is commercial. The Park's Recreation and Cultural Resources Facility's master plan shows an existing street-side trail along the frontage of 55. The property, or NC-55 Highway and High House Road are both major thoroughfares on the transportation plan. And the property is along an existing transit route that's served by C-Trans. Notice of the hearing was sent to the property owners within 400 feet of the site, was also posted on the property, published in the Cary News, and no protest petition was received. And at this time, I'll ask Mr. Swanstrom to present the Planning and Zoning Board recommendation.
I'm afraid I'm going to sound like I'm repeating myself. We also voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request. It seemed, given the situation on the ground in this particular PDD, this made perfect sense. And this isn't something we discussed at the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, but this week I had a chance to go to the Urban Lands Institute forecast for the coming year, and they forecasted that increasingly suburban office is going to be far less favorably viewed in the marketplace as a dynamic. And so I don't think this is an anomaly. I think we're going to probably see this in the future. There's a movement toward higher density, more urban office environments, or higher concentrations of offices.
This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is available to make some comments.
Okay. This time, I'll invite the applicant forward to the podium.
Good evening, Council. My name is Dean Marion. I reside at 107 Palmyre Place in Cary. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Don't know if there's really a whole lot more I can add than what's not, what's already been presented in your information, but one comment, the maximum amount that was selected was actually based on a meeting that we had with the Homeowners Association, and they are the ones that made the recommendation for that amount of square footage. So just wanted to add that. And I'll welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, I'm going to, if Ms. Bierman has finished with her report.
Yes.
Yes.
This time, I'm going to open the public hearing for rezoning 12REZ-19 and the associated statement of reasonableness and consistency. For those who would like to speak on this item, I would invite the first speaker forward at this time. Anyone to speak on this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions, comments, or motion. Ms. Adcock?
I'll make a motion. I move approval of rezoning 12REZ-19. If I get a second, I'll speak to it.
Second.
I think this has been, this is a really good plan for this area, and we know how the previous Kroger store has laid empty for so long until recently. And I think, given Mr. Swanstrom's remarks about what's happening with office in the future, it just, the whole thing just fits together beautifully. And the fact that the folks from West Park did not have any negative comments about this speaks volumes about what we're planning to do.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Frank?
The only question I did have was why the cap on the office, but applicant just answered that. It makes perfect sense, and I'm pleased that they, you know, listened to the will of the neighbors, so.
Okay. Other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. You want to follow up?
I'd be happy to. I now move approval of comprehensive plan consistency for 12REZ-19.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We next move to Item E7, which is the Wilson Road rezoning 12REZ-25. Staff's going to introduce the item. The applicant will share details with us, and after the reports have been given, we're going to open up the public hearing, and the council will refer this to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. Ms. Granton and our staff will introduce this item. Ms. Granton.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone approximately five acres located at 1540 Wilson Road. It's a vicinity map showing the subject property north of Chapel Hill Road, and a close-up view of the property. It is currently vacant and wooded. Cary's land use plan designation is low-density residential. The existing zoning is residential 40, and the applicant has proposed zoning of transitional residential conditional use. Conditions proposed by the applicant are that the use be limited to single-family residential and that the maximum density be three dwelling units per acre. Property owners within 400 feet of the subject property were notified by mail. The property was posted and advertised. Staff has not received any protest petitions, nor have we received any comments or feedback of any kind from adjacent property owners. The site shows that it is impacted by a stream buffer, but field determination of that will be required at the time of site plan review. Cary's transportation plan shows that there is a future thoroughfare proposed, I'm sorry, a future collector road proposed adjacent to the subject property. And then Chapel Hill Road is designated as a major thoroughfare. There's no transit in the immediate vicinity of the subject property at this time. This is the notification map which you just saw. And at this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and describe the request
Mayor and members of council, my name is Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates, and I'm here tonight representing the property owner. Staff's done an excellent job. As was pointed out, we are proposing single-family detached, maximum three units per acre. The land use plan calls for low density, so we are in compliance with the comprehensive plan. With the development that's in the area, the single-family development that we're proposing continues the existing patterns. Would also like to note that we did hold two neighborhood meetings, and through both of those meetings, we were able to answer and resolve any issues or the issues that were addressed by the neighbors, and that can be seen tonight with no protest petitions having been submitted. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and a representative of the applicant is here also if you'd like to, if we have further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Top. This time, I'll open up the public hearing for rezoning 12REZ-25. If you would like to speak at this public hearing, I would invite the first speaker forward at this time. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? I see no one. I'll close the... I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions of the applicant or staff for comments. Seeing none, we'll forward this to a future Planning and Zoning Board meeting. Will this probably be next year? Just curious.
It's possible this could go in December.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, without needing to have a second public hearing. In fact, I was just going to look at the staff report and see if we projected. To be determined. But with no need to have a second public hearing, and if the applicant is ready for it to go forward in December, then that would be reasonable to target that date. But we'll have it posted on the website soon.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. We'll now move to item E2, which is Annexation 12A17. Staff's going to introduce the item. We'll open up the public hearing, and following the public hearing, the council may take action on this request. Ms. Grant and I believe you're up again.
Thank you. This is a request to rezone approximately 0.75 acres. It's a portion of 1640 Wakina Road located just south of the future Morrisville Parkway. It includes approximately 1.13 acres of adjacent right-of-way. The property is in Cary's ETJ and is currently zoned residential 40. And this was just a residual piece of a larger tract. As site plans come in, a property has to be annexed into Cary's corporate limits in order for the plan to be reviewed and approved. So council may take action on this tonight.
Okay. Very good. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing for Annexation 12A17 and would invite the first speaker forward at this time. Anyone to speak at this public hearing? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open up to council members for questions, comments, or motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Annexation Petition 12A17.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we move to agenda item E1, which is the town's Public Art Master Plan Update. Staff will introduce the item, we'll have a public hearing, and we will not take action on this item tonight. Instead, we're going to forward it to the Planning and Zoning Board for their consideration and recommendation. And Mr. Collins of our staff will introduce this item. Mr. Collins.
Good evening, councilors. Tonight we are going to, I'm going to give you a brief overview of the public outreach that has taken place behind this plan. We view the vision and objectives of the plan and review the major recommendations of the plan. This process began in 2011, and at the beginning, it was coordinated with the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan. We took advantage of the focus groups and some of the public forums that took place for that plan, recognizing that public art does play an important component in our parks and greenway systems. We also participated as part of the public opinion survey that was administered for that plan. Some questions were asked for relative to public art. There were some individual public art workshops conducted in November of 2011. Key stakeholder interviews took place throughout the summer and fall of 2011. We had an extensive open comment period where we received input from the public. We participated with you, councilors, in a work session on April 17th in 2012, and since that time, the Public Art Advisory Board has been reviewing graphs at their April and September meetings. So the, I'll take a moment just to read the vision of the Cary Public Art Master Plan. Cary seeks to promote public art through site-specific and community-specific artworks that enhance the public realm, deepen a sense of place and civic identity, stimulate community dialogue, and transform Cary's public spaces into vibrant and meaningful places. And there are five objectives to carry that out. Enhance the quality of life for every citizen of Cary. Develop the identity of Cary through public art. Support economic development goals. Engage citizens of Cary in public art opportunities and promote a greater appreciation of public art. To summarize the major plan recommendations, there's quite a bit in the plan, as I'm sure you've seen, but the major things to consider and that are refinements, I think, on the 2001 plan, which this is an update, is to adopt a policy to consider inclusion of public art in capital projects, consider incentives for public art in private development, include public art as appropriate in Cary, community, in the Cary Community Plan, and enhance community education about public art. And just reviewing these a little bit in detail, the Public Art and Capital Projects Policy, this was a recommendation that came out of the work session that we conducted with you all, that we began from a viewpoint of looking at the capital budget process with public art being a part of that and always be considered eligible, but then once under review by staff, determine which ones are actually appropriate, which ones would be eligible. The Public Art Advisory Board would then review and prioritize a list of potential public art projects, and the funding remains on a project-by-project basis. Public art in private development, to develop incentives to encourage developers to include public art as a part of the site submissions for new or redeveloped projects. This slide is illustrative of this because this particular piece, which is in Stone Creek, was actually donated by a private developer to the town as to enhance its public art collection. So to develop, consider a policy that would develop those incentives so we would have more of these types of opportunities. Public art in the comprehensive plans, as you all know, the Cary Community Plan is being developed that will encompass a whole array of our plans, the comprehensive transportation plan, the Parks Recreation and Cultural Resources Master Plan, this master plan, historic preservation plan, open space plan, as we are incorporating all of these to make sure that this plan is also incorporated, and to look for new public art design standards to incorporate in these plans as appropriate. Enhance community education. We have a variety of opportunities, walking tours of existing works of art, artist workshops to help our local artists understand how they can participate in public art opportunities as they become available, community workshops to educate the broader community about the potential for public art either in sites near their neighborhood or downtown or near their business, wherever, and enhance website information. There are some additional considerations in the plan for, I wanted to call your attention to, the plan encourages a wide variety of types of public art installations. It calls for integrating public art into projects wherever feasible, develop design standards for public and private projects, and develop a specific master plan for public art in the town center. The next steps for this process is to refer this to the Planning and Zoning Board public hearing at its December 17th, 2012 meeting, and then for, to come back to council in January 10th of 2013 for final adoption. So the staff's recommendation is following the town council public hearing. Staff recommends forwarding the 2012 Public Art Master Plan Update to the December 17th, 2012 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting for a second public hearing. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. This time I'll open the public hearing for those who would like to speak on the Public Art Master Plan Update and invite the first speaker forward.
Mayor, council, it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. When I started thinking about this hearing, I was prompted to ask myself, what does public art mean to our community and why is this plan important? Is public art a dog park that's recognizable because of the recycled fire hydrant art? Or is it the Cary Arts Center with integrated art honoring that building's deep history while welcoming the future? You know, it's both of those, but public art is so much more. Public art is about mindset. Public art is about an open, welcoming mindset. It welcomes residents to look at their surroundings differently, to think out of the box, and to welcome both creativity and imagination to Cary. That kind of welcoming atmosphere is valued by an educated, creative populace, and employers are crying out for the innovative solutions that creative minds bring to the workforce. So for Cary, public art is also about economics. An investment in this Public Art Master Plan is an investment in a self-perpetuating cycle that teams educated employees with growing businesses. Whether it's the meandering and award-winning Walnut Street Park Imaginary Garden Promenade or dapple the horse, public art is also about encouraging conversation. Public art brings people together to express their opinions and to learn from each other. And through that conversation, public art creates bonds that lead to a stronger Cary. When I first began volunteering as a part of public art initiatives more than a decade ago, we were building toward a fledgling master plan that included about 30 audacious goals. Today, we're beginning to see the strength and economic gains pursuit of that plan has brought to our town. Before you today is a mature plan. This mature plan has five thoughtful objectives that are poised to take Cary to the next level. The new plan encourages developers to join in the synergy and include art in their project. And that plan encourages the town to model a similar commitment by integrating public art consideration into all capital projects. I encourage you to renew our town's commitment to fostering economic growth, creativity, and stronger citizens. I encourage you to take steps to move this plan forward and adopt it in January's second, after January's second round here at town council. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm Pat Hudson, 116 Preswood Place in Cary. First of all, thank you, council, for your support of public art in Cary and for supporting the development of a new master plan. Having been involved with the present master plan since early days, I've enjoyed being a part of the growth of public art in Cary. Looking at the present Public Art Master Plan and doing a checkoff, it's amazing to see just how much we have accomplished. As a member of Cary Visual Art and a past member of the Public Art Advisory Board, I've seen lots of progress, but there are some things that are not so easily checked off. One of these that is most amazing to me is the fact that if I worked at lazy days and spring days, we used to have to just gather people in, "Come talk to me, come talk to me." That's not true anymore. People are so interested in talking about what projects are underway and asking really good questions. Public expectations are high as far as public art in Cary is concerned. I fully support the adoption of the new Public Art Master Plan, but my preference is to see a percentage for art. Present council members have been beyond generous in supporting public art, but you know, I hate to tell you, you are all not going to be on the town council forever. There's going to be new people, and I would be much more comfortable knowing that that percentage for art would guarantee that there would always be public art in Cary. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is David Linquist, and I'm a resident of the Silverton neighborhood in North Cary. I speak in favor of the draft Public Art Master Plan that has been in development since the summer of 2011. Cary has been a leader for so many years in integrating public artworks into the fabric of civic and recreational facilities and other public places. We have long been mindful of the place that art serves toward enhancing quality of life, engaging citizens, and establishing an identity that's attractive to the diverse population that makes our economic success. We have enthusiastically embraced public art forms of every kind, from statues and architectural elements to footpaths and park seating, and even to park gates, stormwater control systems, and a dragon that children can play on. And we have created a year-long event encouraging our fellow citizens to explore Academy Street on foot in search of new public art creations and thereby making downtown a wonderful, familiar place. Artwork has been so successfully woven into our community fabric that we could easily take it for granted, but it is almost certain that very little of it would be here today without a strong and visionary master plan. Now that the Public Art Master Plan Update has come to your consideration for approval, it is appropriate to build on the success of the 2001 plan with ideas that take Cary to the next level. One idea within the plan that we have been growing into is developing policies that ensure that public art is considered at the outset of capital projects. Recent projects such as Walnut Street Park, the Cary Arts Center, the Higgins Greenway Route 1 Footbridge, and Cary Fire Station 8 have demonstrated that the inclusion of artists in the design stage works to the enhancement of public facilities and uses construction dollars more efficiently. New Cary parks, facilities, and greenways in the coming years will benefit by ensuring that public art, where appropriate, is an original design element. This plan also promotes the use of incentives to encourage private developers to include public art in their plans. Artwork adds distinctive character to our places that, like greenways and recreational amenities, make those places more desirable and valuable. It was once a given in architecture and development planning that function was enhanced by form and that builders competed for artists to make their creations marvels. Our master plan encourages something like this, encouraging a philosophy that art is good for business and that it will be good for business to incorporate public art into development. A long and thoughtful process involving hundreds of citizens and other stakeholders has culminated in the draft plan before you. That plan encompasses not just the proposals I have spoken to, but speaks to future opportunities for public art, means of building community identity and gathering places with art, and proposals for partnering to establish richer inventory of artworks. I welcome your favorable consideration of this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker for this public hearing on the Public Art Master Plan. Anyone at all? I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council members for questions or comments. Mr. French.
Thank you. First, Lyman, kudos to you and your staff for doing a tremendous job on this. Very lengthy document, but very full of a lot of information. So I thank you, your staff, the boards, commissions, volunteers, and everybody that had a hand in this. Just two comments or questions, one of which the speaker mentioned. It says, "The Public Art Master Plan recognizes that the town will continue to fund public art through its capital planning process, but recommends that in the future, the town consider a mechanism for securing additional, more predictable funding. It is recommended that both public sources, such as a percent for art program that dedicates a percentage of this construction cost of qualified capital projects or per capita allocation, be considered in addition to exploring private revenue sources for public art." At our work session, we discussed the percent for art recommendation from staff, and this council clearly said we were not interested in that. So I'm just curious as to why that language is still here.
Well, just observe that the language is not a recommendation. What the language says is that in the future, it keeps the door open for future consideration at some other point when the master plan is reconsidered. That's all it's saying. It's not saying that this plan is recommending or that your action would adopt a percent program, but that it recognizes that percent programs or other funding sources are used in other communities and that at some point in the future that that should be considered. The consultants felt like that as they, part of their job is to just make people aware of what best practices are and to put that in as that is the conventional practice, but it's not in any way committing us to doing that now. It's just pointing out that I think it is a future potential that could be considered.
Okay. I struggle with that language a little bit. Secondly, the recommendation to develop possibly a specific master plan for the downtown or the town, art in the town center. As much as a proponent of downtown as I am, given what we're currently trying to accomplish with consolidating all of our plans into one community plan, I struggle with the idea of another master plan for a small, specific area of town. Any comment to why we're recommending that?
Well, I think the thought about that was that it was that downtown and the town center is such an important part, and part of what public art does is create that sense of place. And so is it better to approach it in a more holistic way or a piecemeal way? And again, I don't think it's committing us to necessarily going out tomorrow and commissioning a new master plan for downtown, but that that's a consideration that we might want to take into account because of the uniqueness of downtown. It's recognizing that uniqueness.
Okay. Those are my comments and questions at this time.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Yarha.
Yep. Lyman, I think the plan is great. I read through the whole thing. I wish every citizen would. I learned so much more about public art than I ever knew before. It's wonderful. The one bullet I especially... The one bullet I especially liked was the last one on your chart where you say, "Enhance community education." I think that's important. I hope it's just not the last bullet on your chart and therefore it's going to be an afterthought because it's, you know, a little off to the side. I hear a lot of comments from citizens who look at some of the public art. These are some very intelligent, forward-thinking citizens, and they scratch their heads and they just say, "I don't get it." I think if we were a little more intentional about our education and have the citizens understand a little bit more what that is. In the plan, it talks about public art as a reflection of the identity of Cary, the culture of Cary, and the history of Cary. I think if we made people see that a little bit clearer, I think the walking tour, the driving tour, as mentioned in the plan, is great. With a little more understanding, I think maybe they would get it and not only get it, but actually appreciate it as I think they should. So I just want to make sure that we're, once this plan gets adopted, if it does, I hope we're very intentional about the education piece.
Well, and that is why it was among the major recommendations, not in the additional considerations, because it is an important component, I think. And we certainly have started some very good partnerships, especially with Cary Visual Art. And there, they do a whole series on, it's called Art in Public, Public Art in Focus lecture series, and we can build on that foundation. And as each piece comes on to work more with the artists and educate, and in community workshops and community activities. The fire station number eight is an example of what we have done, and now as that project gets complete, perhaps work with the artists in terms of helping them understand how it came to be. That's a very appreciated comment.
One question about the process as we're also going through the Cary Community Plan and creation of the steering committee and all of that. I know we made a very distinct decision not to look at this or Parks and Rec Master Plan in general since they were so far down the road. There are some components within the master plan, as I was reading about, making sure you go back to the Conference of Transportation Plan and Land Use Plan and insert parts of public art in those plans. Do you still see yourselves doing that since?
Well, I think as the, as the community plan, and part of the, part of this was written prior to the full understanding of how the community plan was going to develop, and I think one of the areas, I think that we'll refine this over the next six weeks or so before it comes back to you is to clear up some of that. But it did want to make sure that these were parts of the overall plan and not set aside.
Great, thank you.
Other questions, comments? If there's no objection, we'll forward this to the December 17th Planning and Zoning Board meeting. And at this time, I believe we need to entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Robinson.
So moved, very sadly.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
With regret.
There's a motion and second, and discussion is, I would like to thank you for sacrificing, doing two places at one time.
I'm happy.
On behalf of the town. Thank you.
And travel safely.
Yeah, be safe.
Drive carefully.
It's too bad we don't stream it, stream the meeting over radio so that you could listen to it.
Well, maybe it's just a whole way.
Maybe next time.
Before they think of something else.
Have fun.
We have a motion on the table. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No. The motion carries. By majority. Thank you. We now move to Agenda Item E6, which is the Jones Family Farm. Public hearing consists of annexation 12A18 and rezoning 12REZ24. Staff's going to introduce the item. The applicant's going to share details about the request. And after these reports have been given, we're going to open up the public hearing on the annexation and the rezoning. Following the public hearing, the council will or may refer this to the Planning and Zoning Board for their recommendation. The annexation will be placed on a future council meeting agenda to coincide with the final action on the rezoning request. And Ms. Granton will introduce this item. Ms. Granton.
Thank you. This is a request to apply Town of Cary zoning and annex approximately 65.22 acres located on Arthur Pierce Road. The subject property is located south of the Grenadier subdivision, south of Showmount Drive, and north of Arthur Pierce Road. This close-up shot of the property shows that it is currently wooded on the southern portion. A large portion of the property has been cleared and was used as active farmland. There are two single-family homes existing on the subject property. There is an associated annexation petition with the property. And with the request, the property is currently located in Cary's long-range planning area, but not in our ETJ, and does not have Cary zoning. Annexation would be required before Cary zoning could be applied to the property. The land use plan designation is low-density residential, and the existing zoning is a Wake County designation of residential 30. The proposed zoning is residential 8, conditional use. Conditions proposed by the applicant are that the maximum density be limited to 2.1 dwelling units per acre, that there be additional common open space provided along adjacent property lines adjacent to required buffer areas, and that there be a 30-foot type B buffer in areas that exceeds LDO standards. There's rather detailed descriptions in your staff report that shows where some additional open space would be located, and there's also a link to this exhibit that was provided by the applicant that shows some shaded areas where additional open space adjacent to stream buffers would be located, common open space areas adjacent to properties to the north and to the south, and then where that type B buffer would be required. When you have two properties abutting each other where they're both a Class II land use, where the properties are 8,000 square feet or larger, there's not a buffer requirement per the land development ordinance. There's a 20-foot landscape area, and the applicant has proposed to put an actual buffer area adjacent to these existing residential developments. Stream buffers and floodways would need to be field-determined at the time of site plan review. The applicant is aware that there are some stream impacts on the subject property. There is a proposed greenway trail that impacts the property. And there is a proposed future collector roadway according to Cary's comprehensive transportation plan that would impact the subject property as well. Property owners within 400 feet of the property were notified by mail of the proposed rezoning. While the subject property is located outside Cary's ETJ and therefore not eligible for a protest petition, there is the opportunity for citizens to come and speak, and staff has also heard from several adjacent property owners with concerns about density, traffic, lot size, landscape buffers, and especially road connectivity. Many of the property owners to the north were voicing support for the request, but there are some property owners to the south of the subject property that are concerned about road connections. At this time, I'd like to ask the applicant to come forward and describe the request in further detail.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. My name is Glenda Topwith, Glenda S. Topin Associates, and I'm here tonight representing the applicant Ashton Woods Homes. The proposal is to rezone the property from the county designation of R30 to the Cary designation of R8, conditional use. And as staff pointed out, there is a citizen-initiated annexation associated with this rezoning since we are outside of Cary's ETJ but in the planning jurisdiction for Cary. The town's land use plan designation for the property is low-density, which has a density range of 1 to 3 dwelling units per acre. By zoning condition, we are restricting the density to 2.1 dwelling units per acre, which is well within the range of low-density. Thus, we are in compliance with the town's adopted comprehensive land use plan. Development of the site with a single-family residential subdivision complements the existing built environment and continues the current and adjacent land use patterns. The proposed request for low-density, single-family homes is compatible with the existing residential development in the area. Any development on the site will be required to meet all applicable Town of Cary standards. Development plan semitals will comply with Town of Cary's Land Development Ordinance Community Appearance Manual and Design Guidelines Manual. And also, the Town of Cary will be able to provide sufficient public safety, transportation, and utility facilities in service to the subject property while maintaining sufficient levels of service to the existing Town of Cary development. There have been numerous neighborhood meetings between Ashton Woods Homes and the surrounding neighborhoods. As staff pointed out, as does the town, we did notify those residents within 400 feet of the proposed rezoning. After our initial neighborhood meeting, we worked closely with two neighborhoods most interested in the request, and those two neighborhoods are Hillcrest and Grenadier. These existing subdivisions, which are located in Wake County and have been developed pursuant to Wake County standards, expressed a number of concerns relating to buffering, connectivity, transitions, and a few other items. It has been the intent of Ashton Woods Homes from the very beginning of the process to meet with the neighbors, address their concerns, and gain their support. We are very pleased to report that through our close work with Grenadier, a neighborhood of roughly 36 homes, and thanks in large part to the hard work of their HOA representatives, we have been able to come to an agreement as to how our site will be developed. The council will hear from a representative of Grenadier, from Grenadier tonight, who will speak in favor of our request. With respect to Hillcrest, while we were able to address most of the concerns that we heard, we could not arrive at an agreement on connectivity, but it was certainly not for a lack of trying. Throughout the process, a few residents of Hillcrest, a subdivision which includes 21 homes, expressed concern about a vehicular connection being made to their subdivision at the end of Belknap. As the council is aware, the town has a policy of connectivity. We attempted to work with staff and Hillcrest on conditions that would prevent or at least prolong the potential connection. Unfortunately, the town so far has not accepted our proposed conditions due to its policy on connectivity. While we have accommodated the Hillcrest neighborhood concerns related to open space and buffering the communities, we understand that members of the Hillcrest community will not be able to support our proposed rezoning due to our inability to prevent a roadway connection to the end of Belknap Drive. The concerned residents of Hillcrest understand that this connection is not something that Ashton Woods Home wants, but that we are required to follow due to County Cary regulations for connectivity. Ashton Woods Homes remains committed to continuing to work with the residents of Hillcrest and the town in coming up with a solution to the issue of connectivity that will satisfy the concerns of Hillcrest, thus resulting in the neighborhood no longer opposing the rezoning. In closing, the proposed rezoning is in compliance with the town's plans for the area. Good land use planning practices propose this type of development at this location. And the proposed zoning conditions, along with the requirements of the LDO, protect the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding properties. This does conclude my presentation. I'll be happy to answer your questions, and there are other representative of Ashton Woods Homes that's here tonight to answer any additional questions that council may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Granton, have you completed your report? You have? Okay. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing for Agenda Item, whoops, Agenda Item E6, which is 12A18 and REZ 12REZ24. And I would invite the first speaker forward at this time.
Good evening. My name's Burke Evans. I'm a resident, 10-year-plus resident of Hillcrest subdivision. Approximately half of our subdivision is here tonight for this meeting. When I purchased my house 10 years ago, I made two phone calls. The first phone call was to the Town of Cary Planning Board. My question to them was, "What's the chance of my house being rezoned, my property being rezoned? I'm not going to go any further into that." The other phone call I made was to Wake County to find out what the zoning was at the end of our street, because obviously the street's stubbed out, and we all expect it will be developed, this developable property. They told me it was R30. So in the meantime, in the last 10 years, Grenadier subdivision also has developed R30. So all the property in between us, which is all, is being connected to only us and no other developments, no other neighborhoods, we would fully expect that to be R30 as well, wouldn't we? They're similar nature, similar kind, same location, so why would that not be R30? That was just an assumption we made. Land changes hands all the time and is rezoned, but we, collectively as a subdivision, I think we all assumed that this land would be developed in the same manner as the land we purchased. Also, our biggest concern is connectivity. Our road is a Wake County road, is a public right-of-way, but the road was never taken over by the DOT. So no one maintains our road. It's in horrible shape from, I don't know what you guys can see, but where it says Belknap, just below the cul-de-sac to the end of the road is falling apart, completely falling apart. If there's any chance that our road is connected to the road of the Town of Cary, we are the ones responsible for fixing that at this point. The developer failed to post his maintenance bond with Wake County, and Wake County has already issued his last CO. All of our lots have been developed, so there's no leverage for the county or the developer to fix our road, which he rightfully should have fixed it and had it added to the DOT system, because that's the process, as all you guys know, that's the development process for subdivision roads in the county. So we're responsible as residents for that. If you guys, if Ashton Woods develops their property, adds approximately 125 houses, if 10% of their houses go through our neighborhood, that's doubled the traffic on our road, just 10%, 15% of their houses. All we ask is some condition in the zoning that protects our neighborhood. So we don't, we're not subject to additional traffic, additional repair, anything you can put in that condition that will protect us from you connecting. We're not opposed, highly opposed to the density. Personally, I am. As a subdivision, I don't think we are opposed to it, but we would, would fully hope that you would delay this such that we can have more conversations and come to an agreement on our connection. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd invite the next speaker forward at this time.
Hello, Mayor and council. My name is Rhonda Purnell, and I am also a resident of the Hillcrest subdivision, and I'm one of the original ones. So we've been living there for over 16-plus years. I remember walking the property when it was just woods, before it was even developed. So not to reiterate what Brad, I mean, what Burke has said, but this is the main concern of our neighborhood is the connectivity. And I've talked to several people, in fact, Jack Smith, I want to thank you for your conversation that we've had, and from what I understand, and Deborah Granton as well, we've talked. We've actually even sat down with Jerry Jensen for this. So we've had a lot of people that I've communicated with, and my impression is that they're kind of on our side and understanding where we're coming from. You know, Grenadier, I know they're in favor of all this, but they are a much younger neighborhood than us, and they are already connected to two other neighborhoods where we've been out here all this time with no connectivity. And it was explained to me today that the reason why something can't be put into the condition, the rezoning conditions right now is because our land is not the land that's being rezoned. And the fact that we have 60 feet of land, our road comes down and it deadens, the concrete deadends, but our, the land goes another 60 feet. That is not concreted. It's not road. So we were told that because of that, that Cary will not require connection because of the fact that you don't have road to connect to. But what we want to have some condition put in there, and I was told today, and correct me if I'm wrong, Deborah, is that now is not the time to put something in writing that says that you won't connect to us, but that in the future, maybe at the site planning stage or something, that maybe something can be put into writing that, you know, that Cary is not going to force connection. I know that our road is considered Wake County right now, but we just don't want Cary to come in and say that you're going to connect to our road at any future time. You know, another concern of ours is not just the traffic coming through our neighborhood, but then also this neighborhood being developed is the traffic that's going to come on to Arthur Pierce now, which is our only Arthur Pierce now, which is our only road to get out of our neighborhood. Whether you go to the left to go to Holly Springs, or you go to the right to get to Kildare Farm, Kildare Farm especially, just to turn right on Kildare Farm during rush hour in the morning, just turning right can take several, several minutes at a time. And you're talking about the main entrance of this new neighborhood being developed is going to add, if we got 125 homes, you know, even if you average one car per home, you're looking at a minimum 125 cars added to that traffic on Arthur Pierce. So, those are concerns that we have with this. The density, yeah, we would love for it to be R30, to be in the same realms of what Grenadier and Hillcrest is, but if that can't be, again, our main concern is just the connectivity. And we hope that y'all would consider our, where we're coming from, and knowing that we have a few council members that are on our side, that you would all consider what we're requesting here. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Rob Suggs. I'm vice president of the Grenadier Homeowners Association, and I've been selected by my neighbors to speak on their behalf in regard to this rezoning. When we first heard about the potential to rezone and develop the Jones property land, our community organized ourselves, and it was very important to us to make sure that every resident fully understood what the implications of the zoning and the proposed development would be, and also to make sure everyone's concerns were addressed by the developer. To that end, we've had six neighborhood meetings to discuss this. We've hired the professional services we need to understand what would happen, what our rights are, and in the end, I'm actually, I'm pleased to announce that we've arrived at an agreement with Ashton Woods that has unanimous support for the Grenadier, from the Grenadier community. To be honest, we found the Ashton Woods folks to be very accessible, eager to satisfy our concerns, and in the end, we would encourage you to approve the rezoning. With regards to connectivity in the Bellnap neighborhood, I mean, this is, we had the same concerns that they did. We have privately maintained streets as well. We understand the concerns, and in terms of connectivity, we understand the long-term benefits of connectivity within the neighborhood. Now, neighborhood connectivity primarily benefits those in the immediate area. So, Grenadier is one neighborhood that would be affected by the connectivity with the Bellnap Street and Hillcrest neighborhood. And I can tell you, there's no one in Grenadier who wants to see the connectivity to Bellnap. We actually are on board with their request that there be some way that that connectivity can be postponed, put off, or not made part of the requirement of this rezoning. But in summary, I think the Grenadier neighborhood in total is completely behind the rezoning and the proposed development, and we encourage you to approve it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? Let's, oh.
I'm Nancy Mills. I live at 3528, which is south of Grenadier and of the proposed rezoning property. And my husband and Raymond and I have lived there over 40 years. And obviously, the area has changed, and probably, we would prefer no change, but we know change is inevitable, and it's not realistic to believe that it will not happen. And I'd like to focus on what good can come out of change, and we are thankful that it has been a good place, and believe it will continue to be a good place to raise a family and to be part of the community. And I support the Jones application. I knew Ryan's dad, and I knew his granddad, and they were hard-working people, and they appreciated the land. And Ryan has chosen not to farm, and that's his prerogative, but he has been very much in support of taking care of the land, and I think he's gone about it in the very best way to give us a very nice community. And we are very pleased to have Ashton Woods to be considered to be part of our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Marilyn Hardy, and I live at 3512 Arthur Pierce Road. I have viewed the application that Ashton Woods has made, and I vote favorably for its filing, and I do appreciate you all considering the rezoning of the land. I was sort of curious about Ashton Woods and what they had to offer for the neighborhood with it, with the farmland and the Jones Farm being such an asset property, and it's so closely related to ours that I wanted to find out more about it. So, I did some homework. I went and I have toured several Ashton Woods properties, and if you have not, if you're not familiar with them, I would encourage you to do so. It is very well-constructed residential housing. They do believe in the green space, in the buffering, and it's just, would definitely be an asset to the farm Jones land and to that neighborhood, and I think it would be just an actual enhancement to the Town of Cary. It would be just exactly what you would think the Town of Cary would want to have as a part of it. The neighborhoods were beautiful. The one I toured was behind Crabtree, and it was, the majority of it was done, but they were in the last phase, and some were still underway, but as far as their construction, as far as what they were doing in the neighborhood with the other residents already available and being occupied, I was very pleased with the way that they handled their company and their business. And I can only say that if there's going to be someone to take over the Jones Farm and it's going to be a part of Cary, I think you would definitely want to consider Ashton Woods after me doing my homework, so I would highly recommend it, and I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else for this public hearing? Oh, yes.
My name is Arthur Swyski. I live at 3433 Arthur Pierce Road. We have been residents there for almost 32 years. We raised our families there, and like Ms. Mills was saying, realistically, we prefer no change, but that is not, not realistic in this day and time. We've seen many changes. We moved there with tobacco farms and cattle, dairies at the end of the road out there. So, that has changed drastically, and we appreciate and have viewed the plan that Ashton Woods has put forth. It seems to be consistent with some of the other developments in the neighborhood, and we think what they're doing is appropriate for the land that is there, and we back what they're doing, and we ask your approval of this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing? I see no one, so I'll close the public hearing. I know, Ms. Granton, you wanted to make comments. I could tell by your facial expressions.
Wanted to help clarify, you know, for the record, the way zoning conditions have to work per the ordinance. An applicant has to voluntarily submit zoning conditions, but they can't be more lenient than the Land Development Ordinance regulations. They have to either adhere to LDO regulations or exceed those standards in the LDO. So, if road connectivity is a requirement per the ordinance, that is not something that can be addressed with a zoning condition. How the road is designed, that can be addressed at the time of site plan. Removing the requirement for connectivity would require that site plan to have to come back through a quasi-judicial process, but it would not be something, you know, that could be addressed with a zoning condition. The zoning conditions need to apply to the subject property. They can't address off-site property, and they have to address impacts that are reasonably expected to be generated by the proposed zoning. So, that's, it's complicated, and staff did express a great deal of concern about what the neighbors to the south were experiencing with their unique situation, while at the same time, trying to help understand what the restrictions were. The applicant did submit some lengthy proposed zoning conditions, and staff said, "We can't accept these. These are not appropriate per the ordinance."
Okay. Thank you.
If I could further clarify, based on what I've heard, the provision would be for provision for road connectivity. It wouldn't require that the road be driven through the property line. It would only be on the subject property. So, it's merely a provision.
Still be that gap. This would be a 60-foot gap.
That's right.
There is, the pavement does end on Bellnap Road. The pavement ends approximately 60 feet south of the property line. So, what we've explained to the applicant is that our expectation is that they would have to, at the time of site plan, stub to that adjacent property line.
Okay. Comments?
Just, but just to be clear, that does mean that even though it would be stubbed to that, to the connection of Bellnap, it actually, traffic will not be able to go through because it...
There's nowhere to go at this point.
Nowhere to go.
Right. The road is, the road is incomplete, south of the property line, for a distance of approximately 60 feet. The pavement ends, you know, on the Bellnap roadside.
So, does that mean it would never be connected unless the owners, the homeowners on the Bellnap side decide to pave it?
At some point in time, if it's, if the property owners to the south petition for annexation, if they reach an agreement with the existing developer, and there's some settlement to extend that, the potential for connectivity does exist, but in terms of what exists today with the current conditions, we can't make the connection of off-site property here, but it, we can't...
So, the power is really in the homeowner's side on the Bellnap?
To this, yeah.
Right? The only way that connection will absolutely go through is if they choose to either be annexed or pave it and connect it.
I was going to say, if there's a safety, safety issue, I'm going to, I know, yeah.
You see where I'm trying to?
I'm going to call on our town engineer to help clarify this.
Bottom line is, I don't think we can answer this question tonight. I think we will review this through the process and provide definitive answers as we go forward. We have required in the past many subdivisions to connect to the adjacent subdivision that were short of the property line, so it's something we're going to have to review and understand the legal aspects and everything else, and pull that together into a recommendation. We have not vetted that among staff at this time.
How does it work? I mean, this is, seems like the first time, I mean, that I can recall where we're talking about, you know, property coming into Cary, putting in roads that would be Cary roads connecting to county roads, that what we've heard are in pretty bad shape. I just, I'm struggling with that, and then I'm also struggling with requiring somebody to build a road that's looking at a 60-foot from another road that's going to have that gap. That just makes no sense to me at all. But the only way that the town could ever take over maintenance of Bellnap would be for them to be annexed and come into the town. Is that correct?
And that's not clear at this point either. There was some changes in statute that does give the Town of Cary some authority beyond our corporate limits and beyond our ETJ recently, so we would have to review those changes to the laws related to our road construction and/or ownership before I can answer that question.
Do you think that review could be done before planning and zoning?
It will be done. We'll have firm recommendations, or we'll ask it to be tabled at that point until we can get those firm recommendations.
I think that's a key point. I mean, if you listen to the effects of public speaks out, the, it is that uncertainty. I mean, one of the things that we've done over the years through confusion has been to make it very clear with a very obvious stubout. If you see a stubout, it means that somewhere down the road, you know, that that possibility exists. We didn't have that all the time, and we've had some heartburn over the years where all of a sudden, we're now connecting, and we've surprised, you know, some communities. So, we've kind of solved that. At the same time, by solving that, it creates a level of anxiety here for those to the south, and there's a lot of uniqueness here with all the past screw-ups. I mean, you know, as you heard, there just mistakes happened. Things were authorized that should not have until the last CO, you know, so we're dealing with some historical ambiguity, which makes it harder here. It's important to me, as this moves through, that we get a clear understanding, you know. In general, I'm not, I understand in theory the advantages of connectivity, but back when we created the ordinance, the absolute challenge with connectivity is striking that balance between changing the character of neighborhoods versus the approved deficiencies throughout town, and there's pros and cons on both sides. It is the law of the land. I just want to know, before this comes back, what our options are, and what, and maybe this is a legal question, what will be our, can we, through our comments upon this going through, put some, possibly put some assurance, if the council so wishes, I'm not going to speak for everyone else here, but, you know, in the ideal world, since we've heard from how many people do support it, but we have a hardship at that end, you know, I'm inclined to say, let the problem of an ultimate connectivity, that's a problem down the road. Sometimes, it's healthy to kick the can down the road. I don't think we have to solve that problem with this approval. I just want to give some assurances to those folks, to the south. So, those are, those are my thoughts as you move forward, and I think any help that you can to eliminate that ambiguity, whatever way it is, eliminate it before it gets to P and Z, so that when it comes back to us, we'll have a clearer understanding of what we're going forward. I mean, does that make sense?
I didn't really have a question. I think Mr. Bailey's made it very clear that there, just some questions that need to be answered. They'll make sure that P and Z has that information before they deliberate, and the neighbors will at least be assured, one way or the other, what this means.
Correct.
Thanks. Other comments or questions? Do we have an estimate of when this will go to P and Z, since we have more information? I'm guessing January?
Yeah, that's what the applicant's expecting, and that would give us time if there's modifications to zoning conditions to advertise that.
And so, the residents need to be aware of where then you're going to communicate with them? Okay. Very good. All right. We'll see this at the January P and Z meeting. Thank you. In my renumbering this evening, I renumbered the renumbering, and I skipped item E3. So, we'll now move back to Agenda Item E3, which is the Economic Development Public Hearing, and staff is going to introduce this item. We're going to open the public hearing, and council may take action on the request this evening. Mr. Goff, I appreciate you waiting around for me after I skipped your item. I apologize, and I'll leave it to you to introduce it.
He didn't have anything else to do, right? Ed.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I've already done my presentation. I did it to myself in the audience a few minutes ago.
Hope it was entertaining.
This is really a follow-up from the purchase and development agreement that you approved last month, October 11th meeting, and at that time, you, within the purchase and development agreement, you approved certain work to be done by the Town of Cary as part of the agreement. There were four items, and we identified the financial impact of those four items as well. They were the first, demolition of any structures on the site; two, rough grading of the one acre that we're selling to the Crossman's for the Matan Inn. acre that we're selling to the Crossman's for the Maton Inn; three, the relocation of the Maton House and the Waldo Root House; and four, streetscaping and landscaping of the public right-of-way adjacent to the project. Under North Carolina state law, economic development actions where the town provides public financing for development improvements, it must be done at a public hearing. So this is really a follow-up to that purchase and development agreement that you, excuse me, approved last month. As you may have noticed, as you read the staff report, each of the items is capped. That is, for the demolition of any structures, it shall not exceed $80,000. So each one is capped. The total amount's $325,000. It has previously been appropriated. It's in the downtown budget. So what we're doing is, again, having a public hearing to satisfy the state law on notification and to fulfill the provision of the purchase and development agreement. Couple of other things, just very quickly in regard to this. They are moving ahead with the project. I heard today, in fact, at the Carying Place, one of the tenants of the office building at Park and Academy has just signed a lease and will be leaving that facility by the end of January to a new facility on James Jackson Road. And secondly, I've gotten comments, and you probably have as well, that the sketch that was in the, that I used in the presentation last month and that was in the newspaper, was just that, a sketch showing sort of a basic massing of the building. They are working on a more detailed, more accurate image of it. They should have it by, actually, in two or three weeks. That will have a better representation of what the building will look like. And I would also remind everyone, it will go through the Cary process, will be reviewed. They are also meeting with state historic preservation officers. So that part of it is proceeding. And I would ask you to approve the resolution so we can continue this process.
Okay. Very good. This time, we'll open up the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak on the economic development at Park and Academy. Anyone at all? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions, comments, or a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the expenditure.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the expenditure to include items A, B, C, and D.
Second.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Goff.
Thank you.
We'll now move back into the order of the reorder we had at the beginning of the meeting. And that puts us at public hearing, agenda item E8, which is the Chatham Point Plan Development. And it consists of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 12 CPA05 and rezoning 12 REZ26. Staff will, will introduce the item. The applicant will share details. And after reports have been given, we'll open up the public hearing on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the rezoning. Following the public hearing, the council may refer these requests to the Planning and Zoning Board. Mr. Ramage of our staff will explain the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and then Ms. Beerman will give us details about the rezoning. Mr. Ramage.
Hey, good evening. This public hearing case concerns, concerns a request to amend the town's land use plan for a single property of about 3.13 acres in central Cary. The site is located between Old Apex Road and the CSX Railroad and is immediately to the north of West Chatham Street. Properties notified, were notified within 400 feet of the, of the subject site. All those shown in yellow on this slide were sent mail notification. The site was also posted with signs and legal notices were placed in the local paper per town policy and ordinance. This is a zoomed-in view of the site dating from about 2010. Today, the Phillips Swift Creek Apartments are located immediately to the north of the site. South of the site is a small strip commercial center. And you can see West Chatham Street goes under the railroad tracks at the southeast corner of the site. So if you've been in that area, this is a very memorable spot as you come out front of the railroad. At present, the property is part of the Chatham Point PDD, and the site in question has the equivalent of general commercial zoning within the putt. The slide, this slide shows potential stream and urban transition buffers in the area. According to our USGS mapping, the site may be impacted by a stream buffer. However, final stream determination has not yet been done. It would be conducted as part of site plan review. According to the town's transportation plan, both Old Apex Road and West Chatham Street are both designated as major thoroughfares. Old Apex Road will have an ultimate cross-section of about five lanes. And West Chatham Street alternates between a future three-lane section and a two-lane median divided section. This map shows up existing and planned transit services in the area. And really, the transit service is the C-Trans, routes 1 and 2, which go on the Maynard Loop. It's almost about a half-mile from the site by foot. There is no other planned transit service in the area. So the Maynard site can be accessed, accessed though, either by pedestrians going up Old Apex or West Chatham Street. This slide shows existing and planned greenways in the vicinity of the site. The closest existing greenway is to the west on West Chatham Street with a future extension going south from West Chatham Street. Cary's land use plan currently recommends the site for future commercial uses. This designation dates back from the plan's original adoption in 1996, and that in turn was based on it being zoned at that time as part of the Oxford PDD, Oxford Hunt PDD zoning, which had it designated as commercial zoning. In a rezoning case in the last decade, that property was taken out of the Oxford Hunt PDD and became part of what's today the Chatham Point PDD. The applicants are requesting that the site be redesignated as mixed-use on the land use plan map. With a mixed-use recommendation on a single property such as this, the expectation would be that future development would include some mix of residential and non-residential uses. So I'll now turn the presentation over to Ms. Beerman, who'll explain the rezoning part of the case.
This slide shows the entire boundary of the Chatham Point Plan Development District, the area that's outlined. Phase 1 is currently developed with 196 multifamily units. And phase 2 is the subject of this request. This request would not change the, the zoning designation or the boundary of the district, but it would affect the uses that are allowed in phase 2. The phase 2 area is currently undeveloped except for an exist, existing storm pond, which was designed to serve both phases with completion of the development within the The proposed changes to the current PDD conditions are summarized in this table. Currently, the master plan calls for 30,000 to 45,000 square feet of commercial or office use in phase 2. The applicant is requesting 59 multifamily residential units and 7,000 to 10,000 square feet of retail or office use in a mixed-use building. Currently, the height limit is a standard requirement of 35 feet within 100 feet of residential areas or 50 feet otherwise. In this case, there's no residential zoning immediately adjacent to the site, so the existing height limit is, in effect, 50 feet. The applicant is requesting that this be increased to 55 feet. And finally, the applicant is requesting reduction of the streetscape width along Old Apex Road and West Chatham Street, a reduction from 30 feet to 15 feet. And this just shows the map of the master land use plan from the proposed PDD document. Staff did receive several calls just with general questions regarding the proposal and no protest petition was filed. This concludes the staff's presentation, and at this time, we'll call on the applicant for comments, both on the rezoning and the Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Cindy Swartzkoff. I'm with Stewart, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Phillips Development. Also with me is Kevin Johnston, the COO of Phillips Development, in case y'all have any questions for him. I'll briefly touch on the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and then go into the rezoning. I appreciate Ms. Beerman's very comprehensive review of everything, so I'll just briefly touch on a few things. For the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, our proposal is to change the land use designation to allow high-density residential with ground floor retail, commercial, and office uses. This change will allow for a mixture of uses in a convenient location, thus promoting an efficient pattern of land use, providing goods and services to nearby residents, and hopefully providing the opportunity to decrease auto trips by providing a vertically integrated mixed-use project. The parcel is adjacent to several other mid- and high-density parcels, such as Chatham Point Phase 1 and Oxford Hunt. The change to mixed-use will be a benefit to the local community as those living in adjacent residential areas will be able to easily access this urban infill development. We believe that the amendment is warranted as the town encourages mixed-use and medium-to-high-density residential development adjacent to commercial areas. And this change in the Comprehensive Plan Amendment also supports the following guiding principles from the Growth Management Plan. Concentrating growth near existing and planned employment centers and available infrastructure, as well as increasing permitted densities in preferred growth areas. And I'd also like to just briefly touch on the changes to the existing PDD document. The document was originally approved by town council in March of 2006. As Ms. Beerman noted, the amendments to this would be simply to add a multifamily component to the already allowed commercial, retail, and office uses on the southern portion for the phase 2, going from purely commercial to a mixed-use component with the 59 units as well as 7,000 to 10,000 square feet of retail, commercial, and office uses on ground floor. We are asking for very minimal changes from the existing planned development document. The change from 50 to 55 feet in height, revision of the streetscape from 30 feet to 15 feet, and then the change in allowing to have multifamily residential on the front portion of it. With that, that'll conclude what I have to say. Kevin Johnston and I are here to answer any questions y'all might have.
Thank you. This time, we'll open up the public hearing for anyone who would like to speak about the Comprehensive Plan Amendment or the rezoning. And I'll invite the first speaker forward at this time. Anyone at all? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing, open it up to council for questions of staff or the applicant.
You got first.
Just two questions. Want to clarify, the proposed streetscape reduction on phase 2, is that the same streetscape width in phase 1?
No, the streets...
Is it jive with phase 1?
The streetscape width in phase 1 is larger. That's, they got a reduction to a 30-foot width at that time, but that's, there's a different requirement related to the, just for the residential as opposed to the mixed-use.
Okay. So since it's mixed-use, it can go down the...
There's the opportunity for that to be smaller.
And then the request from 50 to 55 feet, is that consistent with phase 1?
I would need to ask the applicant that. I'm not sure what the exact height of those buildings are, but it would be very close.
Because at the end of the day, when this is all built, it's gonna look like a continuat, the phase 2 is gonna look like it was part of phase 1 when it was constructed, I'm assuming. So I was trying to understand the requests.
Sir, my name is Kevin Johnston with Phillips Development. Good afternoon. The building height's basically, I don't know exactly what Swift Creek is. They're three-story buildings. These buildings are gonna be a podium on the retail side, up to three stories, so it'll be about the same height. There's another building that'll be a split-level building, kind of like a basement, that'll end up being four stories. But because the, the site kind of drops off there, you know, it'll be about the same height as the apartment complex. The look and feel of what it's gonna be, if you have a packet with you, I think there's a, somewhat of a rendering in there to show what it looks like, to try to pop on that corner there of Old Apex and Chatham and dress it up in that area. So, you know, we had an idea of creating some green space and all that stuff on that corner to make it a nice, you know, a nice area there that's attractive for the adjacent community.
Thank you. Other questions, comment, and a second?
How many acres are in phase 1? And how many units?
There's about 13 acres there.
And how many units?
There's 196 units there and about 300 people live in there. Very successful. We have, we finished construction on that in December of this past year, and we're about 94% occupied there. We have a lot of families that, that live there, have a lot of events and everything, and our clubhouse, and it's been, it's been a great development. We hope that the retail part of this, you know, helps, you know, that, that area there. And we've taken a lot of polls and stuff of our residents that live there now on what they would be interested in having there, so that, you know, they're kind of that home environment, you know, staying there, not going out driving around. They have services and all that stuff right there at their back doors, so.
Follow-up, please. So you're saying you're at 100% occupancy?
We're, we're, we stay somewhere around 90, 94, 93, 94%.
Which is a 100, basically, 100%.
Yes, ma'am, based on move-ins, move-outs or so, so.
So if, so just a question. So actually, since these are gonna be connected, right?
Yes, ma'am.
If this remained commercial, you'd end up with what's essentially a mixed-use area anyway, wouldn't you?
That's right.
Because you have, without adding more residential there, 59 units on three acres.
Yes, ma'am, because we have a, we have about a 5,000-square-feet clubhouse that's at Swift Creek with a swimming pool and all that. Those amenities would be shared between, between the communities, so, so, yeah.
Yeah, but I'm, my point, I was just asking a question. It seemed like with commercial already there, you wind up really with a mixed-use development. It's not called mixed-use, but that's what it is, right?
Yes, ma'am.
The only thing I noticed was that it was a reduction in the amount of commercials over the entire plan.
Right, because you're adding the residential.
You're absolutely right.
Right. But it seems like if you're trying to provide more retail opportunities for people, you'd want to not decrease that amount. Just, just a question.
Right, yes, ma'am. It was originally 30,000 to 50,000 square feet, I believe. You know, it's a, a box CVX to go in a corner versus something that's 10,000 and, you know, there's, you know, I don't, we don't know exactly what's going in there. We're targeting, you know, businesses like you see in the briefing there, you know, Cold Soul Creamery or something like that, Carolina Cafe, you know, the Attorney's Office potentially, State Farm Agent, you know, a kid's hair cuttery, you know, pet store, something like that. That's kind of the feedback that we got from our residents, you know, Verizon Wireless Store, something like that. So we think it would be a good, there's a lot of people there that, that walk around, you know, and the sidewalks and the streetlights and all that stuff that we put in on Old Apex Road. It's, you know, it's a really nice community if you haven't been, been out and drove through there.
Just another thought. But there's nothing that prevents you from doing those same kinds of shops if this were to stay commercial, right? Am I, what am I missing?
I think you're right.
There's, there's nothing that, that makes you put a big box store there or, you know, with CVS, whatever, compared to these.
We wouldn't be allowed to put residential.
Oh, I know that.
Then that's the main crux right now, is being able to add the residential there and then turning it into mixed-use so that we have vertically integrated, as opposed to having disconnected and having apartments on one parcel, mixed-use in another. We're gonna be having a vertically integrated building, having the uses on the first floor and then residents above.
No, I understand that. I was just going with your explanation that what people were looking for were shops that were walkable and things like that. And it seems like your current zoning would allow you to do that. That's all.
Other questions, comments? Okay. This'll be referred to, thank you.
Thank you.
This'll be referred to Planning and Zoning Board. I am not sure when. Do you have any other?
Since this is a Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the CPA would go ahead of the rezoning and the rezoning will be, will pick up. We would expect the CPA could probably go in December and then the rezoning would pick up probably January, February.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Let's see if I've missed any other public hearings. I think I got them all.
Great.
So I would entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Okay. Pursuant to GS 143-318.11A4 and 3, I move that we hold a closed session to, number 1, discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the town, including an agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the town in negotiations. Number 2, consult with attorneys employed by and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town. And number 3, to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143-318.10E.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are in closed session. Thank you. We'll reconvene our council meeting. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.